Public comment on will be limited to a total of twenty minutes at the beginning of the meeting and will continue at the conclusion of the meeting if necessary. Comments are limited to two minutes as stated by the mayor. The city council may not discuss or take action on issues not on the meeting agenda, except that matters of the city council or staff may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by persons exercising public testimony rights. The first speaker that we will recognize is Reverend Sharon Richter, followed by Margaret Lee, followed by Bert Newton.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak. Can you hear me?
Dan, go ahead. You have two minutes.
My name is Sharon Richter. I'm pastor of Trinity Lutheran Church at Walnut and Catalina. I'm here to speak about homelessness in Pasadena. Although homelessness is on, on the streets has declined over the last decade, the number of people living in their vehicles has increased. Covid has made this crisis worse. So I urge you as Christians to do what you alone can do. Please pass a zoning overlay that will allow churches by right to build affordable and supportive housing on their properties. The homeless come to Trinity for food, for warm clothes and shelter. I know many of their names and their stories. And you may not realize that many of them have lived there here their entire lives. They used to own or rent a home or work here. They lost all of that, but they went to school here. And some of you probably were classmates with them. It's scary to be homeless, so they stay in Pasadena because it's familiar. They know people here and they know the community. They know where they can get a drink of water. It's our Christian responsibility to care for the poor and have mercy on them, to love our neighbors as ourselves. So please allow our churches by right to build housing for these neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. We will call on Margaret Lee, followed by Bert Newton, followed by Kathleen Ludwig.
Hi, good evening, city council members and Mayor Gordo. My name is Margaret Lee and I've been a resident in District Five for over twelve years. I'm a housing advocate locally with Making Housing and Community Happen, and I engage in affordable housing-related teaching and research as a professor at Susie Pacific University. I'm also a board member of Elizabeth House, a maternity shelter in Pasadena. And I also serve as a leader at Fellowship Church, which is currently on a pandemic-related break from meeting at Meara High School. I recently came across a news article written by a city council member from Campbell, California, California named Sergio Lopez. In his article titled "Addressing the U.S. Housing Crisis Must Be a Top Priority for Churches", Councilman Lopez urges local governments to take up the issue of allowing affordable housing on church land. However, the part of the article that really surprised me is that he specifically cites Pasadena as a best practice model. While it is true that Making Housing and Community Happen has partnered with Pasadena-area churches to develop plans for housing on their land, what the article doesn't mention is that slow political bureaucracy is preventing these plans from being realized. I understand that the-
Five seconds.
I understand that the Planning Commission will address the overlay zone for church land in November, and the steps are technically in place for the issue to come before the council, but many people in the community do not understand why it has taken the city so long to even reach this point. We have at least ten churches who are waiting on you, our elected leaders, to lead and take the initiative to allow a process that would allow them to build the housing they so desperately want to build. The faith community and the affordable housing community have been coming to you for over a year now, asking for this topic to be agendized. But it's not enough to just agendize it. We are asking you to listen to your constituents and partner with us to develop innovative solutions to address the challenges of housing affordability. Thank you.
Call on Bert Newton, followed by Kathleen Ludwig-
Two.
Followed by Jane Ward.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Some of us recently reviewed all the affordable housing that is in the pipeline to be built or converted in Pasadena, and it's quite amazing. Bill Wong and his staff are really good at what they do, and the city needs to be commended for this incredible work. The statement that there's more than a thousand units in the pipeline is a little bit of an understatement. Depending on what you count, it's considerably more than that. So thank you for that great work. We found also that the, though that the city won't be able to maintain this pace of housing production for the next eight years due to limits on housing dollars. What is in the pipeline now will use most of the housing dollars available. But after that, we will need to find more housing dollars to meet our Reno goals and to house everyone who needs to be housed. So we need to start talking now about where that funding will come from. Two possibilities would be: one, increase the amount of affordable housing, that affordable housing gets from the general fund. Right now, it gets very little. In comparison, the police department gets a whopping fifty-seven times more than housing gets. Number two, increase the transfer tax and apply that to affordable housing. Many cities have a much higher transfer tax than we do. We also need, need more sites, which is why we need to rezone churches for affordable housing. And we need to clear up when church rezoning will be addressed. In the September twentieth meeting, Steve Marmel said it would, that the Planning Commission would take it up in November, but on, in the October eighteenth meeting, he said it would happen in January. So since it was already delayed, you can understand why further delays make, you can understand why further delays make us anxious. So I would ask you to please clear that up and hopefully Planning will take it up in November. Thank you.
Kathleen Ludwig, followed by Jane Ward, followed by Alan Shay.
Hi, thank-
Go ahead. Two minutes.
I've been a member of Pasadena Midnight Church for more than fifteen years and, and my church, like most churches, are just trying to follow the example and teachings of Jesus and bringing the good news. I've also been honored to work with First AME Church with their food program on Friday through the first year of the pandemic. I'm gonna skip a bit because I planned on three minutes. So I just want to say I am grateful for all those of you in government who truly care about people across the socioeconomic spectrum. And I, like you, am a believer in freedom of religion, and most people of faiths have tenants that declare their commitment to helping the less privileged. Sometimes the government can just try to not make it harder, and sometimes you have the opportunity to pave the way. Churches are committed to their neighborhoods. They just want their members to be able to live nearby. They want to, want to not just preserve, but to improve aesthetics in their communities. I know affordable housing and low-income housing are terms that people have been trained to fear as bringing problems, but I know that, most of you know that there are many examples of affordable housing that have improved neighborhoods. Heritage Housing Partners, Heritage Square. I have friends, church members, who live in both those places and, and you would love to have them as neighbors, and their neighborhood is better-
Forty-five seconds.
When churches are given the right to develop their properties as they feel called by the teachings of Jesus, they're invested in improving their communities. We're motivated to include our neighbors' needs when planning the developments. The church can have forty housing units and have a preschool and an after-school center in its community space, or a cafe or a coffee shop, or a dozen other things that might be inspired from conversations with the neighbors about what would be helpful. So if you thought we'd change the zoning to allow churches and other houses of worship to do the important work that our faiths call us to do, you will see beautiful ripple effects throughout the city, one community at a time, and, and you would be very happy. And please consider this. Thank you very much.
Call on Jane Ward, followed by Alan Shay, followed by Sonia Burnt. Ward?
This week-
Let's go ahead.
This week, Black Lives Matter Los Angeles, at the request of Anthony McLean's family, held a Facebook Live event for their international audience that was titled "The Cover-Up in Pasadena". On the panel of speakers was Anthony McLean's cousin Nicole, and I described some of the beautiful word, or I transcribed some of the beautiful words she said about Anthony, the father of three young children who Pasadena police shot twice in the back and killed. She said Anthony was very shy. He just wanted to be loved. He lost his mom at a young age, and he was kind of like a mama's boy. And when he lost his mom, you could tell it took a lot from him. He was just lovable. My grandmother raised him. He was the baby boy. He wanted love and affection. When he loved, he loved hard. When he had his kids, he was a very good father. He was a beautiful dad just watching him. I remember one story. He was at my grandmother's house and brought his daughter with him, and you could tell they had such a strong bond. He wanted to go outside for just a minute, and she was like, "No daddy, stay with me." She wanted to be right with him. I just hate that his kids are missing him. His kids are named Anthony Junior, Bryce, and Skylin. Skylin is his three-year-old daughter. He was FaceTiming her right before the police stole his life. No one from the city of Pasadena ever came to our family and said, "I'm sorry." No one, ever. The city has done-
Second.
Same with Kendrick McDade's family. I want us to keep his name alive, not let his name die in vain. We need to hold these people accountable. Those are Nicole's words. Dr. Melina Abdullah followed these powerful words by explaining that many scholars have described the triple murder of black men. First, they steal the lives of black family and community members. Second, they assassinate the character of the person they have killed to convince the public in themselves that black lives don't matter. And third, the third assault is that cities like Pasadena and law enforcement agencies never even bother to think who that person was attached to, who loved them, who cared about them. So their family gets dehumanized too. All of this is-
Ward, your time has expired.
The city-
Your comments still close? Thank you. Alan Shay, followed by Sonia Burnt, followed by Michael Williams. There you go, ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor Gordo and council members. Again, my call again is about Anthony McLean. The unfortunate thing, and I'm always dealing with the sources, is that the, last week, I believe it was, Steve made reference to the, the shooting in Long Beach and how, how heinous and egregious it was. Well, Anthony's was just as bad. And at least the people in Long Beach, they arrested the officer within thirty days, issuing a warrant with a two million dollar bail, and he's now charged with murder. Where's the leadership here in Pasadena? They re, they utilized the video. That was the whole premise of what was the determining factor for arresting that officer, was the video. And the video has controversy in the sense that the officer may have interpreted that the, the vehicle was gonna hit him. But he, he pulled his gun out and shot from the rear and shot the, the victim in the rear. In Anthony's case, Pasadena police shot Anthony twice in the back, where there was significant distance between Anthony and the officer. Anthony absolutely had no gun. And the source, Pasadena's video, shows the officers bringing the gun into the crime scene and placing it on the east side of the street. And then taking a picture, they only have one picture showing the gun on the west side in front of the park. That's nothing but corruption, but yet the leadership here is not taking an affirmative position to fire these officers and bring this to a close. Do the same thing Long Beach did. Fire the officer, have the officer arrested, and let, let him go through the process of redeeming himself instead of making the city carry this-
Mr. Shay, your time has expired.
Thank you. I, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sonia Burnt, followed by Michael Williams, followed by Cat Ross. Burnt?
Good afternoon. I have emailed each of you a detailed letter covering the subject of my comment this afternoon. I want to thank city leaders for hosting an emergency community meeting last week on the issue of increased gun violence in our city. At that meeting, Mayor Gordo stated that we need long-term solutions to address gun violence, but quote, "We also have a responsibility to do something in the interim," unquote. Our city has another critical need that is not being addressed with the urgency required, the lack of interim housing for our unsheltered residents. At the city's budget hearings last June, community members raised the urgent need for more interim housing to shelter our nearly three hundred residents who sleep on the street every night. At the June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one council meeting, Councilmember Hampton asked Housing Director William Wong if the department needed more motel vouchers for interim housing. Director Wong stated he felt the department currently has enough vouchers, but that he would come back to the council in about sixty days with quote-unquote more steady numbers. Apparently, someone decided that the department would make its report to the EdTech Committee. The August EdTech Committee was canceled. Then I was advised that the Unmet Needs Report was not completed in time for the EdTech meetings in September and October, but it would be on the agenda for the November meeting. But now, according to today's agenda, the November EdTech meeting is canceled. Meanwhile, our hundreds of unsheltered neighbors continue to suffer on the street, while permanent housing for all of our unhoused residents is the goal. That is clearly a long-term plan. Our city has-
Thirty seconds.
...the ability to quote, "do something in the interim," unquote. Last week, I was advised that Pasadena Covenant Church is experiencing severe problems with unsheltered persons staying on its property. It is the city that has the ultimate responsibility to provide for and protect our most vulnerable residents. Please agendize this issue on an emergency basis at city council with instructions to staff to provide recommendations for interim housing to meet the need, not just an assessment of the need.
Great.
I want a burrito.
Michael Williams, followed by Cat Ross.
I have a question real quick. Before we go to the next speaker, what is the plan, city manager, related to bringing something back to the council?
No.
Because every week, residents are asking the same question. And apparently, they feel like there's no answer. So what, what is the plan from your perspective?
Councilmember Kennedy, can you specify as a, a plan for what?
To, just simply to agendize the issue, to have a overlay, so by right, housing for these-
As it relates to the church housing issue-
I wasn't finished.
Right, as it relates to the church, church housing issue-
I wasn't finished. You asked me a question, I'm gonna give you an answer. As it relates to using religious-owned properties to provide housing or ability to build housing, that seemingly is the question, Mr. Marmel.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. As it relates to church properties for affordable housing, formerly homeless housing, that item will be coming forward to the Planning Commission. The head said, or, the, the Planning Department's been working on our housing element. We got responses back from HCD, so it will be to the Planning Commission in January as it relates to church housing. I imagine the key issue there will be whether it's by right in all areas of the city or not. I'd like to correct the record in that churches may currently apply, in some instances, were a CUP for housing projects, but they would need to meet current zoning. So I wanted to dispel the notion that it's not allowed at all. I understand that the advocates are suggesting that we allow it by right and in more places. So I just want to clarify. So that will come forward to Planning Commission in January, and then we will be coming forward to the EdTech Committee, ultimately to the council regarding motel vouchers on December eighth. And the Housing Department has come to the city council on numerous occasions as we utilize our federal funding to ensure that we have motel vouchers and our other tools that we use to try to address what is the intractable problem of homelessness.
Thank you, city manager. Thank you, Mayor.
We'll bring in Michael Williams, followed by-
I'm sorry. I just have one follow-up question on that. So yes, I do know that this is coming to the December eighth meeting. There's a myriad of reasons why we had a council EdTech meetings in November. But before December eighth, will the Housing Department have any needs for extra funding? Or are they okay right now?
Councilmember, I believe the vouchers that the department has is sufficient, but I, of course, will follow up with Bill Wong. If they are not sufficient, and if we need further council action to make sure that we have the resources we need, then we'll certainly come to the council as appropriate.
Yeah, the reason I ask that is because of, we all know it's, you know, getting cooler and cooler every day. So thank you, I'm, I'm seeing, appreciate that.
And that was the arrangement the last time the matter appeared before the council is whenever the department needed more resources, they would act proactively and make a request.
Okay, next, next. Bring in Michael Williams, followed by Cat Ross. We have a card for Sarah Brewer-Boland, but she has not checked in. Williams, go ahead. You have two minutes. Williams? Hello? You there?
Hear me?
Yeah, now we can hear you. You have two minutes. Go ahead.
I am, of course, calling again to demand that the officers who killed Anthony McLean be fired. I'm also calling for the firing of, of the immediate resignation, I should say, for Steve Marmel and John Perez and Michelle Bagnere, the city attorney. Because of the documents that were released last Monday. The fact that these people are still on the board and still employees of the city is actually kind of startling. I don't know what more needs to come out or what more information needs to be found for y'all to make an action. If you council members, Councilmember Hampton said that he did not see the document. If any of the other council members have not seen the document yet, you should be demanding to see it and read it and know what's in it. Because according to what information has been released already, there has been witness tampering, there was the release of information of witnesses' names. There is things that are in this document that should be alarming and startling to you, and you should be taking action on it immediately. There should not be wait. But I guess that's par for the course for this city, is that when things happen that are startling and should be urgent matters, you all drag your feet. But things like ShotSpotter, because they're promoted by the police and pushed by the police, you just approve without any research or any information about it at all. This is the problem with this, with what's going on with the city council and what's going on with this city. It's a shame that it takes people shaming you all, publicly embarrassing you all, for you all to do anything that is what people want to see done in this city. Stop kowtowing to the police all the time and actually listen to what the community wants and actually do what is right-
Your time has expired.
Do what is right. Fire those officers. Fire the city manager. Fire all these people who are a part of this cover-up. Period.
Cat Ross, followed by Sarah Brewer-Boland, who appears not in the meeting, so we would go to Carolyn Galoney. Ross, go ahead.
Good afternoon. I'm interested in following up in my comments from a couple weeks ago. What protocols will be put in place to ensure ShotSpotter does not lead to racial profiling? For months, you've heard public comment regarding the community's lack of confidence in Pasadena PD's ability to do their jobs in an unbiased way. What is the city's public-facing message about the community's lack of trust in the police to enter northwest Pasadena without racially profiling drivers? How can you rely on a technology that sends police to an area to look for quote-unquote suspicious people when Pasadena police have shown time and again that they automatically equate black men with suspiciousness? What technologies will the city be employing to increase the safety of residents like Anthony McLean and Kendrick McDade? This money that was wasted on ShotSpotter would have been better spent on piloting a cahoots crisis team, where there is no chance our residents will be inadvertently killed. Not only would that dramatically decrease the city's liabilities, where city residents are footing the bill for police misconduct, but it would increase the community's trust in services provided and safety provided by the city. Thank you.
Sarah Brewer-Boland is not in the meeting. She will go to Carolyn Galoney, followed by Hiram Cormier Jr., which could possibly be the last speaker in the initial twenty minutes. Galoney, go ahead.
Hi, each week I come here to plead to take action and fire and prosecute, or push for the prosecution of Evan D. McQuinn and Ryan Maroney and all the officers involved in the murder of Anthony McLean. Each week and every day, I, I think about this. I agonize about the people that were left behind, about the loving father, about the friend, the child that he was. And each and every week, you guys are silent. Your inaction just speaks so loudly. And it can, it, this should consume you. It should not be something that we just ha, let, let people talk about and we'll move on. This should consume you. This is another murder of another part of our community. J.R. Thomas Kendrick McDade. There are, these are people that were loved, that are loved. And how is this not your daily, weekly conversation? How isn't this brought to the agenda every day, every week? I, I ask myself, why, why doesn't this weigh on your hearts? And I don't think it does, because we're not, you guys aren't sitting here pushing for it. You guys aren't having this conversation out loud. You guys aren't going into the community every day and ask, and talking to them and saying, "We've gotta do better. Help us." Because we're here you, and we need to do better. We need to take our PPD's budget and give it to housing-
Three seconds.
-or give it to a different method. And all I can think of is that somehow you've traded this life for the money that you get from the Pasadena Police Association. I, like, I know your campaigns are funded by them. And if it's not the money, like, what do they have on everyone that's sitting here? I, I can only think of that because this is a life. I can't even imagine trading life, but I can't imagine, like, what, what is scaring you? Please make this an utmost important. Please, please hear the community. Please hear the cries. Make a change.
Hiram Cormier Jr. will be the last speaker for the initial twenty minutes.
Yeah, can you hear?
Yes, we can. Go ahead. Two minutes.
Yeah, again, for like the millionth week in a row, I'm calling for you to fire the officers who killed Anthony McLean. Again, their names are Evan D. McQuinn, Ryan Maroney, Ronald Serrano, Connor G. Duncan, Chris Rosa. I really don't need to say that because you know exactly who they are. The whole department really needs to be defunded and abolished, but, you know, for now, I guess you can just fire those cops. But, you know, as other callers say, I would like for you to finally recognize the humanity of black people, specifically in Anthony McLean, knowing that he was a man, a human being, deserving of, you know, recognition, deserving of love, you know? Nobody ever, as I heard on the, on the, you know, program that Black Lives Matter L.A. had this past weekend, you know, nobody ever showed any regard for his family, and that's exactly what hate is. It breeds contempt. It breeds disregard. It breeds a, a lack of action, a lack of, you know, urgency to make things right when things are done wrong, when things are, when, when wrongs are done. You know, you're willing to give more protection to a cop who kills somebody than to your own citizens because of po bar, because of laws that protect cops, more than they protect people. You're telling me a kid could be walking home from school in Pasadena and be shot or stopped, harassed, and put in jail, as other communities have, community members have mentioned, by those same officers, because you want to protect his right to his job, which doesn't exist, more than you're willing to protect my right to life? And while y'all sit there and talk to each other while people are speaking, I'm gonna go ahead and say, Marmel needs to go, Perez needs to go, city attorney Bagna Riz needs to go. Everybody here needs to really go. So, you know, fire those cops, defund the police, and fuck the Pasadena Police Department. It's as simple as that, and fuck them too.
I'm gonna give Mr. Kennedy an opportunity to talk about the emergency meeting, because, you know, I, people come to our meetings pretending to speak for the community, and let me tell you something. I didn't hear any speaker who was present at the community meeting that Mr. Kennedy and I attended this past week after a couple of shootings. And, you know, nobody's raising the fact that a young man died today at Huntington Hospital as a result of those shootings. um who was shot in the head, and Mr. Kennedy and I attended a meeting at Robinson Park, and none of the speakers that you heard today that we hear every week um had the courage to stand up at Jackie Robinson Center and say to our community, our constituents, I'm going to speak for you. Uh, none of them, uh and frankly, I don't need, uh neither does Mr. Kennedy, people coming and telling me um that they speak for the people that I represent. The people that I represent, I speak to directly, uh and as does Mr. Kennedy, and we showed up um last, I think it was last Thursday evening, together with the police department, uh and spoke directly to our constituents, to the people who we represent. Uh and I would invite any of these speakers to attend these meetings uh where people are in pain about uh what's happening in their neighborhoods and in their parks, and say to them directly, I will speak for you. Uh and see what kind of results you get when you stand up and in that uh, in that uh environment and say, no need for you to talk to your elected leaders, we'll speak for you as we do, as we pretend to do on Monday evenings. You don't speak for the people that I represent, and I certainly don't need any of you to speak to them directly. Mr. Kennedy, did you have anything to add?
Um, thank you, Mayor and colleagues, um, the mayor, uh the deputy chief of police, city manager Steve Mermel, uh a whole host of others in the audience. Let me tell you about the emergency meeting. The emergency meeting was called because we wanted to hear from the community directly on matters that concern the community about the uptick in violence and particularly the shootings. The mayor, nor council member Kennedy, or the vice mayor who attended and Andy Wilson at the beginning, knew what kind of reception we would receive. But what was clear is that people wanted answers, they wanted to talk, they wanted to provide solutions that the mayor and the full council could take a look at. The mayor committed to a number of actions that would be very beneficial in terms of transparency around money, budget, and we all acknowledge that no one individual, individual of the council uh moves the body as it relates to funding any particular program. Um, there were approximately two hundred, two hundred residents of our community in the room, in the room at the Robinson Park recreational facility, along with Brenda um Williams as the head of our Parks and Recreation Department. And there were a hundred and seventy-six individuals on the Zoom call. We didn't just make it where uh it's only in person, because we knew some people still felt uncomfortable about coming. Now, we can have various uh opinions on how to move forward, but let me just tell you about the people who were in the room. They had a, a panoply of different ideas on how to move us to a safer community. Everyone, with maybe the exception of one speaker, I mean, everyone with the exception of one speaker was respectful to one another and respectful to the mayor, uh city manager, uh the deputy chief of police, Cheryl Moody, myself, as they were demanding, not asking, demanding that certain things be done. And some of those demands have already been answered by staff. It didn't require uh an action of the council. So, in saying that, Mayor, because I don't want to take too much time, because we have other matters, I just want to say in terms of a framework for discussion about these matters, we provided that. We heard from the community directly. Some of what took place was very painful, listening to mothers and dads who had lost a child to violence. Um, for the, for the young man who was shot on the Robinson Field. They lost forty young people whose parents said, uh, we're not coming back. And so we have an obligation as a city, and I know that all of you already know that, to make the community safe. So, the police department has its role, the mayor has his role, the city manager has his role, council members have their role. And I think that you, listening uh by Zoom or in this room where the council is taking place, would have been proud of the way in which our community responded. And it's not a one-off. It's not that we're gonna have one meeting and the world gets better. It's gonna be intense work by all the nonprofits who are focused on this issue. And the mayor committed to the group that he's committed to, the leadership required to make considerable difference in how we move forward. So, Mayor, I I I think it'd be inappropriate to take too much more time. I will say that um Pastor Terry Turrentine, whose church is on sunset in the heart of the community, adjacent to or across the street from Community Arms, and um that was uh Deliverance Co- Church of God in Christ. And then uh Pastor Gene Birch, who has Community Bible, I think it's now referred to as Community Church, kinda gave a sense of the importance from an ecumenical sense, and Reverend Kidman, Larry Campbell from First, Larry Kidman from All Saints, Larry Campbell from uh First AME, and a whole host of others who are concerned about the issues were with us that evening, and we were there. We were there and we're still here, and we're committed, as the mayor has already said, to finding real solutions to the problems. Uh we're not always gonna be on the same page, but we're all committed to fa- solving uh the problems that uh create violence in our community. Uh, and we're committed to finding solutions to housing and making sure that our young people who are playing football or any other sport at Robinson Park are in fact safe. I think that's enough for now, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, and thank you for describing the meeting. The meeting was well attended. Uh, thank you Vice Mayor Wilson for having attended. And again, you know, when when people come to our meetings in public session, people from Sierra Madre, you know, Carolyn, you live in Sierra Madre, which is basic. You know, those of us that live in this city, uh and actually in the affected neighborhoods are persuaded not by public comments once a week, but by the people that we represent, who are our neighbors, who um we ask to support us uh and who we meet with. Uh, and I would challenge you, Carolyn, or anyone else, to attend these meetings and talk about the concerns of the community, as you put it. Um, because the community is concerned about the three young men that were shot in our city over the last week. The community is concerned about the impacts to young people at Robinson Park uh and Villa Park, because this activity is going on in our neighborhoods. And so if if I sound a little bit um uh offended, it's because I am. Uh, and every member of this council should be as well, and every member of this city staff should be as well, to have people from outside of the city come and tell us what the people that we represent in the community believe uh is offensive. Uh particularly when you don't have the guts to show up at a city town hall meeting with Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Wilson, and others, and say to the people we represent, hey, we're speaking for you. I'd like you to do that, and I would invite you to do that, uh and see what sort of reaction you get from the people that we represent and that are really concerned, genuinely concerned, as everyone in this room should be and is, about young men being shot in our community. Uh, one of them lost their lives today, and so to think that we don't take this matter seriously, you're just wrong. Um, thank you, and we'll move on.
Mayor, I just announced that Yoel Carter Martinez, uh Ellen Finkelpearl, Jasmine Richards Abdullah, Adriana Batista, Heavenly Hughes, Victor Hodgson, Jason R., Frank Schofield, and uh Jill Shook are uh in the queue to speak and will be called at the end of the meeting after all the other business. Over for the remaining is, uh, we have um eight, but there may be a couple that are not in the meeting anymore. Um, two minutes. Uh, Yoel Carter Martinez is not in the meeting, so we'll go to Ellen Finkelpearl, followed by Jasmine Richards Abdullah, followed by Adriana Batista. Finkelpearl, go ahead, you have two minutes.
Okay, I'll be very brief. Two weeks ago, you heard numerous speakers speaking against the proposed ordinance to place no limits on campaign contributions for local races. Um, now, on Tuesday, the Legislative Policy Committee met to discuss further this proposed ordinance. There was expert testimony from the Director of Common Cause California, Jonathan Metzstein, on such issues as whether limits favor incumbents, as was claimed at the last meeting, and what can be done about this problem of independent expenditures. So, I just urge all of you who were not on that committee or who have not looked at that footage of the expert testimony from Jonathan Metzstein to please tune into that, um to uh educate yourself about, right, the, from the experts at Common Cause, um and of course, I hope you'll vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Yoel Carter Martinez still not in the meeting, we'll go to Jasmine Richards Abdullah, followed by Adriana Batista, who's not checked in, followed by Heavenly Hughes.
Um, I just wanna start off by saying, um, his name is Jamal Patterson, but the young, everybody keeps saying the young man that was shot and killed, his name was Jamal Patterson. He was near dear to my heart. He was part of my youth group. Um, I don't think that anybody should be using him as just like a, a sentiment or one line just for your, your own causes, so please leave his name out of all of you guys' mouths, because nobody has went over to his mother's home and gave her any sign of condolences. I've been over there the last four days, and no one from the city has said anything to his mom. So, I don't think he should be one of your speaking points. Um, two, um, I I switched up my host speech because we were talking about Carolyn, and I know Carolyn personally, Gordo, Victor, she's like, she's been helping since JR Thomas's murder. Her children and, and uh JR's children play together. She's helped with Freedom School, she donated, she's taking these kids on field trips with me. So, I know Carolyn personally, and I resent that sentiment that she would say she doesn't speak alongside the community. Um, she's actually uplifting the community's voice with us. Um, and we also, I just wanna keep on reiterating, we want Officer Edwin D. McQuinn fired, Officer Rosa fired, Officer Duncan fired. We want all, Officer Maroney fired. We want the footage from Officer Number Two, which is Edwin D. McQuinn's footage. We want all of it released, not just from the time that Anthony was shot. We want the full body cam footage released. Now, the other day, we were doing nev- we were doing neighborhood watch the other day, and I know this stuff, the officer, he turned on his body cam footage at, at, when he felt like it. He probably, he pressed that button when I was walking up to him, and I asked him, you could turn this off and on at will? He said, yes. So, that sentiment that, that Edwin D. McQuinn did not turn on his body cam footage from when he left the office, I I implore you guys to, to know that these officers can turn on their body cam footage at will, at will. So, we risk really some corruption going on, and I know my time is up, but I'ma keep, I want my whole three minutes. Because you guys keep taking away two minutes, no, I want my whole three minutes. I don't care, I'm still talking. So, I really like, Edwin D. McQuinn is fired, we want you guys to release all the body cam footage. And I sent over the Public Request Act information that we all, that we got and, and we sent it over to Victor. Have you looked into that information, Victor? No, I'm done.
Thank you. Adriana Batista, followed uh by Heavenly Hughes, followed by Victor Hodgson. Do you wanna go ahead? Two minutes, please.
Hello, um. I would like to state, uh, fire Edwin D. McQuinn, Officer Edwin D. McQuinn. Also, release all body cam footage from all officers involved. Um, we made a p- a public records request, and the body cam footage for Officers Duncan and Officers Rosa have not been given over, and according to the um claim uh sent by the family's attorney, Officer Duncan was the officer who located the gun. And this is very sketchy, that still over a year later, we have not received any public footage that actually shows the gun that was stated, falsely stated to be on Anthony's body. Um, so the, so concerns regarding the murder and cover-up of Anthony's murder near and far are valid. Also, in regards to the emergency meeting that took place last week, um, there was a wide range of opinions stated, but all um, all of those opinions seem to support the sentiment and um, sorry, the sentiment that community resources are needed. Um, the police were twenty seconds away from Jackie Robinson, and they still were not able to stop any harm that was done at the park. So, what does this tell us? This tells us that prevention is really the most powerful tool, that investing in the lives of young people, investing in the lives of the community, um putting ma- major investment into the community, as was pointed out by someone who lives on a resident.
Batista, your time has expired.
Programs that were taken away for families need to be put back, and we can't continue to see surveillance technology increased at PPD. Meanwhile, they target black and brown people in Pasadena continuously without actually caring about their lives before they die.
Thank you. Heavenly Hughes, followed, followed by Victor Hodgson. Jason R. is not in the meeting, so uh we'll follow by Frank Schofield.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Two minutes, go ahead.
Shots fired, shots fired. That's definitely what it felt like tonight, when we felt the thorns of the words that Victor Gordo said to the community members that take the time to listen to all that is being said and done at these city council meetings. Epic fail again, epic fail. Victor Gordo, I was in shock for you to belittle and be condescending and also just really snobby with threats of how you felt about the community that caused it. Members of my tribe, pride, service Pasadena and Altadena every single day. My daughters work right on, on Marengo and Del Mar every day. They spend hours of their life in Pasadena. We were born and raised in Altadena, that's a neighboring city. Everything that you all do affects all of us, because we work and live and play in Altin- in Pasadena. Altadena is a neighboring city. I just was in shock. But the thing about it is that we all have bad days. So, I understand that maybe you're having a bad day and that you came off with thorns in this Pasadena Rose City. And it was unacceptable, and we demand a, a, an apology. And I already forgive you, Mayor Victor Gordo, for what you said to the community, belittling, condescending, and threatening to the community. So, the emergency meeting, we were all there. We were invited. So, the emergency meeting, we were all there. We were invited through Zoom. If you really want to see our face, then make these meetings live, make them in person. So, obviously, you guys can do things in person. You all had the emergency meeting. I appreciated John Kennedy putting together that meeting for we, so that we can all express and hear what you all are doing. Did, did you guys submit?
Time has expired.
Did you guys submit that, uh, Ricky Pickens lived in Las Vegas? Did you guys submit that to the community, the person you all had speaking? Don't even live out here, you gotta fly him in from a different state. We're all from Los Angeles County, S- San Gabriel Valley, Altadena and Pasadena. Our words and our voice matter, Victor Gordo. So, as I asked before, please call me.
Thank you. Victor Hodson, followed by Frank, uh, Schofield.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead. You have two minutes, please go ahead.
Okay. Okay, I am deep, deeply saddened and concerned about the unjust death of Anthony McLean. Anthony was shot twice in the back and killed by Pasadena Police Officer Edwin Do Gwenden during a traffic stop, stop in August twenty twenty. Pasadena Police Chief John Perez has claimed that, claimed that the video evidence shows McLean holding a gun, but I watched the video and I can't see no visible weapon. The L A Times is also reporting that no weapon is visible. I am also very troubled that the video, that the video footage released to the public was edited by Pasadena Police with, with, with o- own voice, with their own voiceover and visual, telling the public that they want us to see. This does not inspire my confidence in the transparency of the Pasadena Police Department. We need action.
Say his name, Anthony McLean. Say his name, Anthony McLean. We felt like it wasn't appropriate to bring that up at the emergency meeting.
That's Hughes. Uh, we'll call on Frank Schofield.
Hello, my.
Schofield, go ahead, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Frank Schofield. I want to start by saying I support everything that has been stated in relation to Anthony McLean. Uh, but I am here, uh, especially today, to advocate for the proposed ordinance that would allow for affordable housing in church property. I am a member of Pasadena Mennonite Church and a resident of Council District Five. And every day that I drive up Lake Avenue and I see neighbors without housing being policed and harassed simply for not having a roof over their head, or every year, uh, in this city that I keep hearing stories of friends or acquaintances having to move far away after generations living here because of increasing rents, year after year after year. Um, it just honestly infuriates me to see that this city has such an easy time supporting luxury condo developments, while the same cannot be said for affordable housing. Thankfully, what this city is not willing to really push for, churches are taking into their own hands. Because across Pasadena, churches are offering their land for affordable housing. But what they need is zoning to be changed to let them do that. This change will speed up the process of building affordable housing, and it will make that process much less expensive, allowing for even more affordable housing to be built. Nonprofit affordable housing developers need zoning that provides sufficient density and an approval process that is not lengthy and is by right. If this ordinance does not provide this, then it will not facilitate the affordable housing we need in these church properties. So, tonight, I urge you as a group of,
Thirty seconds.
As a group of elected leaders for this city, to take these steps to make way for affordable housing on church property. If you do not do this, you will be choosing to side with politicians who have done, who have gone down in history as aligned with exploitative and racist policies. Instead, I truly urge you to make the choices that will let you be remembered as those who stand for justice. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes public comment on matters not on the agenda. Thank you. Um, I think that concludes our public agenda, uh, for the moment, and we now. Mr. Kennedy, is your hand up?
Are you going to request, um, matters that we'd like to see on a future agenda? If so, I'd like to briefly.